Dale James, we got a vote.
Um, Greys, although they're, they're really just about done too. Um, they've got some landscaping and stuff to do, but that's really about it. Um, unless Reggie has stuff inside that I'm not, I don't know about. Uh, King's Cross, I'm sure you'll see that come back up. Um, hopefully they'll work to completion this time. Um, the storage facility on thirty-one there, I see people working over there, but it's kind of, I mean, to me, it looks like they're just about finished.
It's the same builder that Green's, that Greys is.
Yes, that's right. And they seem to do good work. Um, and the Dollar General twenty-five, they are moving dirt and, um, I haven't seen any concrete or anything out there yet, but I know they're moving dirt.
Where's two eleven?
Two eleven?
Yeah, like Keys.
Um.
Morgans, I'm Morgans.
Yeah, Marv, the road you turn in on Morgans is two eleven. Uh, residential, haven't really changed anything here. Uh, Cannon Park, they're still building phase four and phase five. You, I've said this three times now, but you should see a final file on Cannon Park six next month. They've got some bond issues that they've got to work through, but I, I feel strongly that you'll see it next month.
Hey Kevin, going back to Dollar General, is it going to be a market, market one or just a?
No, it's just going to be the original. Um, M R's, they're still working in sector four, they really don't have much left in sector four. I'd say there's a handful of lots left. Uh, Federal Creek, they're still building in phase two, sector four. Uh, Coslin, same thing, they're still building in phase three. Aberdeen's building in phase one. Um, they'll, they may be starting, they've already got their preliminary platte proof for phase two. And we did that like a year, almost a year ago, and they should be starting. I'd feel pretty soon. Uh, Timberline, they're building in phase six and phase seven, actually seven A. Uh, Millpoint, they have started building houses in Millpoint, phase one. Um, phase two preliminary platte is in our office and you'll promptly see it in January two. And Saratoga, they're finishing up building townhomes there and they'll be done. And for Parkway Apartments, still moving dirt. Oh, and, uh, one last thing, these are our signs we're going to be putting out.
Oh nice.
Um, thank you Tammy. Um, so we're just going to put them, if it's just, you know, if it's just got one brandage, it'll have one sign, actually it would be two, back to back. Um, yeah, do that for rezonements and, uh, build for special sections or not. Which that's worth adjustments really. Uh, conditional uses, things like that, we'll put them out. That's all I got?
We can add an annex in two?
Yeah. I knew there was something else to do. But they're bright yellow, they should be able to be seen.
When will we start that, Kevin?
We'll start it soon.
Like next time?
Next time we have time.
Kevin, I know this is county, but do we know anything about the, just old patches in place on twenty-two?
I've heard rumors of things, I mean, I'm not going to say rumors here.
Yeah, of course.
But, um.
So not much?
Not really, there's interested buyers there, I'll just say that.
I thought it had been sold, it's not been sold?
Yeah, it may have been sold.
Okay, yeah.
Donovan builders, all of it, retailing.
That's what I've heard, I've heard townhomes and I've heard other times.
Is that what it's zoned, it's zoned?
I don't know what it's zoned, it's county, it's probably agricultural.
All the signs are on there because it's county, it's county.
And to be honest, it's probably agricultural, correct.
So how can they do townhomes if this?
They have to get rezoned.
If, if it's a zone area, there's a lot, there's a lot of the county.
Yeah, I've talked to the gentleman over there and he, he said he's not against annexing either the city, but it's only a bit of a issue.
Wow, that would be crazy to have townhomes there though, that would be, that's already, already such a busy road.
Yeah. With approval from the county, you can still build.
Do, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if, if he stays in the county, there is not a thing in the world we can do about it.
I know. Wow.
Yeah, I could.
How big is it?
So it's not really that deep.
But there's, yeah, they got loans, the board to, then the bulls are all the Earl, yeah, pulls all these fields, everything from there to the interstate. So there's one that could be.
That long too.
Awesome, sounds possible.
I think you'd be worried talking with him just to see how serious he is on rezonation.
And there's nothing that would stop him from building now and annexing later?
Well, he was told to get our approval of annex, so.
Yes. But you would annex it in as, you would annex it in as municipal reserve, then if that's any reasonable.
Yeah, for a, for a good.
Right.
The council put the zoning in legislation and, uh, zoning and rezonation based on our.
Whoever want, whoever has it, it would probably be more, a better route to discuss it with the city before you build whatever you want. Because we might not want what you build.
Nothing making us.
Oh, I know, I know.
And water.
Water.
And water, and I don't know, I've heard different things on sewer, I don't know what the rule is on that. I've heard that you got to be in the city limits to have sewer and I've heard that you don't.
Greys Tire Service, they'll be doing more final inspections, they want to be open by the first of the year.
Oh, so they're, oh yeah, I thought they were closed.
We went and met with them last week.
I need to come, so.
They really have a lot to make their whole house.
Pretty couple.
There's a bunch of them, eight ones, they're full of eight states.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Florida, I'll just use states.
Oh, I think that DollarGeneral.com right there.
Doesn't.
I thought, when I went to, it doesn't?
And there's another.
Oh, it's like, I was looking for Great Champs, I would say.
Yeah, there's another slay up at the end of the hall.
Right, I think I got that one, but.
They pushed it up.
Although it is, I'll say that in the air, but I really, I would have.
I figure with the rain we've had, they probably.
It's still too, little too close though.
Well, hey, saving the license, not own and ride them, reading it and look like.
If you're in Long Island, I'm live after my Christmas. They were just going to leave in that worksite, they were out there Saturday, Saturday until after dark.
Wow. Guess they're going to hurt.
Yeah, it's the same builder that built the one with George Roy.
Two, three months.
They threw that one out.
Yeah. When I talked to him at the start of that one, he wanted to have both of them done in the time period that he had for one.
Oh, it's getting funnest. Smart.
If you can do it.
Yeah.
Made it yours for a little while. As fast as the other one went up, I was afraid they were going to build it by Christmas stuff there.
That's true. They knew what they were getting.
They knew. I got to say, me. I guess y'all make it physical, so I have to.
It's cold. Well, we, we put on, I mean, we can still, we can do it.
It rained off. That was a fear of the.
A good turnout.
I got to work on the weekends, you got a lot of strains.
Hey Kevin, the, um, area of Han, George Roy Park.
Have you been in there? For park?
Yeah, okay, um, do we ever, we had talked at one time, zoning that as park, or is it?
We don't have a park for a second.
No, we don't have a park zone, but we had talked about it, what, what is that zone right now? Because we had talked about.
It's a municipal reserve right now.
Okay, because we had talked about zoning that into, like changing that zoning, it's been a couple of years.
I could tell you that, uh.
But not, not totally, but just as municipal.
Right, current zoning for the park is R one. Now that, like I said, the other things besides it does not, but just to give you an idea of what.
Is that what, is that what others municipalities do, they zone R one, I mean, like what would be the, is there a park zoning? We talked about it, I think we need, I think we need a park zoning.
Institutional, I think is what we were talking.
Oh, no, institutional.
We did have institutional office.
Yeah.
Well, I think we, I think we were talking about, the institution we had in mind was for all public, like putting the schools in it, parks in it. And city property.
Yeah.
Well, that's inhabited or what have you, I know the city's property, that's property, doesn't necessarily need that.
What, what, I'm sorry, what, does like Alabaster and Wayne and Chelsea do for their parks? You know, I'll have to look into that, that would be interesting to see, so we can be, maybe consistent or.
Because it came up when we were talking about that property next door to George, uh, George Roy Bar.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
We're way down here, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you're right, you're fine, I'm just saying, like, I know that was something we discussed a couple of years back and we never kind of came to a conclusion on it, so.
You know, parks are allowed in E one, R one, R two, R two A, R three, R four, yeah.
I don't think Alabaster, when we looked into it, when they brought it up, the last time, I don't think Alabaster has a separate zone in four parks.
So they just do it as R one or something?
Allowed in whatever district they allow.
Yeah, just about any kind of residential district.
So that'd be something good for us to look into though, because like, looking at all our parks, whether we're going to go to institution or whatever, um, zoning for it.
I mean. What would the benefit be?
Well, right now, if that lane is zoned, you say it's not disowned.
It's zoned, it's for certain right now, it was probably in it, just never, never resolved.
So what can you put on this blue reserve?
Anybody who's, you think the city owns?
Nothing, nothing, it's a whole thing, it's a whole disownment, gotcha, they would have to disown it, it's not.
If you wanted to do something on, on a piece of property that was on MR, you'd have to get it rezoned.
That one is.
Yes.
Are there a lot of those in this area?
We've got a decent amount, um, probably more than we need. Um, we went through probably, we went through about ten, fifteen years ago.
Probably ain't been that long.
Yeah, and cleaning up the missed reserve we had, we kind of built up a little more.
What is the process for us, um, selling that, that prop, those properties, does that go before city council?
I don't believe so. Don't believe it does.
For the city to sell it?
Yeah.
City property, I think it has to go before council.
Does it?
I think council has to approve it, do they not? They have to approve that.
We have to approve purchases, I know that.
Yeah, I think they have to approve it, yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So you, you know, your recommendation, we just leave it like it is right now?
I think the city has control over it. No matter what comes on and you put in. And like I said, if, if there was any kind of transaction to be done with it, it'd have to go, it'd have to go to council.
Can you not?
It's a separate process. There's.
You could prezone it.
Yeah, you could pre, you, when, like, yeah, when we annexed the commission, makes a recommendation, annexed being inhabited zone. And city council can, can do, can bring it in if that request is done.
I don't know whether it would pay for us to do that, we don't have. But it would be nicer, because then you know what.
It's a cleaner process.
Yes, yes, and then it don't get like.
That's it.
Overlooked.
Yeah, that's sitting MR for ten years.
Or no zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, do we have any no zoning still?
Well, we have MRs.
Yeah, because they came, they come in as an MR.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at on, I, we've got one, we've got two on highway twenty-two.
Where, where at?
Probably the trailer park.
The trailer park and next door to, uh, well, right across from that Ashland Park.
Okay.
Uh, then the George Roy piece.
There's two pieces in South Calera.
So that's just land that the city holds?
It's land that was annexed in and never zoned.
Okay, but the city owns it?
No.
No, they did it on.
That's individual.
Oh, individuals own it, but it wasn't someone that was brought in?
No.
It happens more.
Really?
Um, there's another piece over by the interstate, small piece.
Is that not something moving forward, like we could try to do, is to zone what we're?
You can zone anything, anything.
How would we, why would we ever annex something in and we'll zone it?
See, well, and it's the same guy as the MR down there that's privately owned, we can, the city can initiate a rezoning process.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, technically do not have to have the property on it.
Really?
We can initiate a rezoning.
They can fight it, but.
Yeah. Well, it would definitely, we would want to match our comprehensive plans.
Yeah, most of them, well, the one over by the park, I would say it's MR, it's R one beside it, the other side of the bar. I would just make it R one as well, just to keep it clean, consistent. Um, the stuff on twenty-two, that piece that butts up to Allen and Power. Um, I would say it's a B two, just kind of looking at it, but. Um, and I think he brought it, I remember he brought that in, I think.
I think that was his intention when he brought it in, it was to be a business.
Right. Uh, trailer park, you'd have to, you'd have to zone, trailer park, those.
Where's that at?
Um.
Right there where they sell the metal buildings at, across from George Roy. George Roy comes out, at that piece right there.
Oh, on the, across from BP?
Yeah, gotcha, the new Dollar General, that's there.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and two pieces.
Well, when you said trailer park, and I was like, there's not, I live right there, I think there's not a trailer park.
There's two there, actually.
Yeah.
Okay.
Two separate ones.
Two separate ones.
Is it really?
One of them's in county.
Are they not connected though?
No.
I need to pay more attention for.
By two separate people, I'm driving.
Okay.
Yeah, the ones in South Calera, that one rather, I wanted to look at. It's probably big enough to be A one, I imagine that's what they would want.
What I'm saying is, it might be two different parts, but aren't they located in the same?
Yeah, they're like right beside each other.
Yeah, 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 okay, they are, yeah.
Connected.
Okay, okay, gotcha, that's what I was thinking.
I don't believe they're all the same.
But all that, because those buildings, um, that's, is that county?
Which ones?
The ones that are someone that.
Oh, there's these.
There are front parts. It's so weird how it goes from the train tracks, county, city, and then Southern Hills is back to county.
My whole road down the only one. It's never been the six by seven, it's on sixty, so nobody else is inside too much.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you're annexing property in by thesis, so, you know, you just can't say.
Is that to, yeah?
You can't say, you're in the city now, you know. We can zone property when we want to, but we can't just annex property. Well, I guess we can, go with the legislation.
Yeah.
Because I believe we annexed all that in the north side of, the north side of Calera was all done by legislative act?
All that done over the Dade and MRs too.
Was it?
Mm-hmm. They all come in as a big, big group.
No, I'm talking about like a legislative act that was done in Montgomery. Because I think the north side of town was.
Yeah, because the original Calera was.
It was just downtown.
Not nothing.
They just laid it back to seven, seven, nine.
What, was that the North Industrial Park or what was that?
No, a lot of that stuff on, at two thirty-one exit was probably in there.
Hey, hey. Okay, thank you. Yes. Yeah, no, it's fine, it's fine, I'll get it. Okay, thank you.
Try not to, I think, put anything over the debris away and use it properly. I really, I wanted to get a house. Someplace sort of like Bill's Night.
Yeah, that was a professional castle. Turned everything. Yeah, I can leave us all on one floor.
He's got forty something, he's a.
I don't want no time.
Well, that's the CEO, like, C O O of Help South.
I got you.
What was that?
Shell, Shell Creek. Yeah, I was reading.
My heritage was like, the entrance was like a gift card.
Yeah, okay, I've seen it. And it was, it went for four, what he's got.
Forty, like forty-two, forty-four, yeah.
Yeah, somebody got to dig. If you've got that much money, somebody got to dig, you couldn't bring up there, man, what I do is so great.
Three, seven, or six.
Yeah, I was going to say, turn around and.
Somebody else had to have had that idea.
Somebody else had to have had that idea. Ain't, ain't no telling.
Fifty-five thousand square feet, twenty bedrooms, twenty bathrooms.
Yeah, that's big. It's gotta be dilapidated inside or somebody, somebody else would got it.
I think they're gonna do it, use it for something else.
Like an event center maybe?
It's, uh, they just said they're gonna change it up.
What, is it Perry Hall? What, what's the name of it? Is it Perry Hall or?
Uh, the name of the house?
Yeah, it's changed. Because it now has a sign in front where it says new name.
Yeah, I'm not sure. They completely.
I thought it was Perry Hall, I could be wrong.
Yeah, I read the amount. Something's wrong here. But I didn't know it was a guitar house. It, it been up years ago.
Yeah, and all that trouble we did it.
I bet there was a bunch of other lanes attached to it. I bet it's hard to clean up that top.
It's a pretty home though. I hope they keep it.
Oh, it looked cool.
It'd be a great event center.
From there, it would look awesome.
I thought Montalow had it. And they were doing something with it.
Now, this is the one that showed the creek.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I've heard. That was just hearsay. But with all, you know, there's so many things that go, people go out to Shilker Creek a lot, so I could see it being an event center, doing really well.
Right, yeah.
They probably, they probably had a pretty, depends on what their HLA allowed. Shilker Creek was probably going wild.
It's a different Shilker Creek.
Were you talking about the white house on one nineteen?
Yeah, I'm at one nineteen.
And he's not.
So, that's the hottie.
No, Shilker, over Dunlop Valley, Shilker, Shilker, uh, country club. He had it paid for.
We, we inspected the house.
They were stealing much money. Because there were lanes all over the castle. Because that guy was unspotted. Beer, beer beers. I don't know what, I call them beers, though.
He was just, he was.
I had the word say that name.
Oh, really?
Was it war? Was it war?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, it's six o'clock, y'all. Want to get started? All right, first, we'd approve the minutes from last meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve in the dispensary three hundred minutes.
Sorry.
Yeah, go on your face.
I think Bill got the second on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, is there any new business? Don't have any old business.
No, I wanted to talk about a couple of things from the fire department. Um, a lot of these subdivisions, we're getting the community mailboxes. And I would like to see if we could add to the subdivision regulations requirements on, uh, address numbering on the houses. Uh, it'd be a certain height and contrasting colors so that the fire trucks can actually find the houses. Because there's not mailboxes in front of it. Most of our subdivision probably won't be moving forward.
Yeah, most of your neighborhoods now are not.
I don't think that's post office.
Yeah, that's because, yeah, post office, that ain't, that's not developers, that's not, that's, that's post office.
So that's just something we would add in to the, some.
We could.
You would have to have a public.
Oh, yeah.
Address numbers is in the building, like on the house. So it's, you know, it's up to the contractor to make sure he's got it on there, but it's something could add to the inspection.
That contrasting color though is gonna be.
Is that not there?
I don't know, IBC. Um, I know the businesses through I C is marked for the businesses, you know, six inches in height and contrasting colors.
Okay, certainly not supposed to.
Whatever we gotta do, I think that would improve it. And the other thing me and Kevin talked about earlier was, um, so the public works manual for the speed table. I want to get that invented so that we have reflectors on the speed table so that you can see them and not.
Yeah, we're gonna have a flash and sign on the two on equal drive here shortly. We asked for reflectors once and we're gonna get a flash and sign. Talking about it. Because I, I almost hit it, none of you there.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, they, they are.
They're real hard to see in fire.
Um, but I can, I can tell you that technically the public works manual has never been adopted by the city. So it's, that's something that probably could just be written in and then.
Yeah, because I think they're still working on it.
They're still working on it, yeah. That's been a work in progress for years. But that's, like I said, that could be added and then the whole thing.
But the address numbers would need to be.
That would be public works, no, that.
No, no, but it would, we'd put it on inspection.
I mean, there's a lot of different ways you could go about doing that. You could put it in the inspection, but then it would have to be in code.
Yeah, you could add it as a supplemental regulation though, too.
Yes, you could do that.
The reg's supplemental regs.
Could do that. The reg's supplemental.
Yeah. And just note that it needs to be contrasting colors.
Is there any action that's being taken?
Council has to approve that. I think the audit.
Reg, you would have to make the changes to the supplemental regs and take it to the council.
To the council, just the council.
It wouldn't compare. It doesn't go to the, yeah.
Yeah, we only come here if we added it to the subdivision.
To the subdivision regulation, that's correct.
But it may be the easiest to add it to the supplemental regs, where he catches it on that end and then he has an actual inspection to, to make sure that it is going and correct.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, that's who's gonna look at it. I mean, unless it's.
So that's just something we can make more aware, maybe popping that out?
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think you'd be opposed to that at all.
I think it would be very helpful.
Yeah, it would be. Make sure you're firing, you don't think about it.
No, I didn't, I wouldn't think about it.
You know, an adon home puts them in their brickwork, the actual address, but nobody else does.
But in the one of them, like.
But at night, you can't see that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It, it's not contrasting colors.
I mean, it may also be something to look into, that it has to be, that there's some kind of light shone, shone on it. I don't know how you're gonna do that.
I have a real up sign, I still can't find it.
That's bad.
They know whereabouts. They know where we are right now.
Well, was there any other discussion we wanted to have? I'll check on that. I know there's a code section on those and it said, it does say something about four inches, um, contrasting with the background, a certain script. It's got all that, but I can't remember what it.
I'll, I'll talk to Reg too.
Is that the I R C or I D?
It's gonna be in both, but I'm talking about the residential code.
Assuming that's what he uses for our I R C.
Yes.
He'll do that on a single family and two family and townhouses. We got any other new business we wanted to discuss?
So do I make a motion that we've turned?
Second.
So, motion second. All in favor?
I did, I was going to.
I'm pretty much.
It's okay.
Invite your pose.
We're just like, man.
Really, my beef is with Bill, so it's.
Uh, George second, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yes.